I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is June 27th, 2016, and Roca will...
Aaron, DePauls, Whelan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Do you have the meetings of June 13th? Any changes additions? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Awesome.
There's a motion, there's a second, any questions to the motion? Roca?
Whelan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Questions?
Uh, only thing I have is the tax income received since the last board meeting is $696... Six... Six hundred ninety-six thousand dollars, eight hundred sixty and three cents. Uh, for some reason we haven't gotten our video gaming taxed in the last month. I'm not sure why that is, but we're getting the real estate taxes in now.
Anyone from the audience wish to address the board? If not, that is an administration question, may I?
Um, we are to consider a loan proposal in the amount of $350,000 for a period of 18 months, interest only with a balloon due at the end of the term, and this is for the sewer plant expansion. The village requested two proposals which will be provided in a separate report. If one of the proposals is approved, the village attorney will draft the appropriate ordinance for adoption and a letter of qualification for the July 11th meeting. Ann Lynn, if you'd like to...
Okay, um, we received back, uh, two proposals, one from First Community Bank and Trust. Uh, the interest rate for it is, uh, 1.24 percent with no additional fees or prepayments. That, uh, for the 18-month period, paying interest, uh, alone, and then the principal at the end. The cost of that particular loan is $6,510. The second, uh, the second bid that we received was from Midland State Bank with an interest rate of 1.48 percent and dock fees of $250. Uh, again, no prepayment penalty. The cost of the Midland Bank loan would, uh, for interest is, uh, $7,770 plus the dock fees of $250, bringing it to $8,020 for that loan. I think you have copies of both proposals in your packet.
So we need a motion to, uh... I'd like to make a motion to, uh, accept the proposal from First Community Bank and Trust at the lower interest rate of 1.24 percent. The loan amount, $350,000 for a period of 18 months, interest only with balloon due at the end of the term.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion, there's a second?
Just, just one comment. If, because of the state budget crisis, EPA shuts down and anything is delayed, we have two options at the end of this balloon. We could either pay it off with internal funds or reauthorize, probably at a higher interest rate.
Oh, wow.
For, yeah, 'cause rates I'm sure will probably go up by then, or if the bottom of the ballot...
But I, I doubt seriously whether we'd be able to something.
Correct.
At the most.
But just so we know that if... Because of the state fiscal crisis, I have no idea what's gonna happen with EPA.
Right.
And we would have to either reauthorize the loan because EPA shut down, or pay it back with internal funds, which was the one option.
Any other questions or comments? Roca?
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whelan?
Yes.
Uh, consider an ordinance establishing prevailing wages for fiscal year 2016-17. This is an annual formality, and the ordinance drafted by the attorney is enclosed for your review. The village clerk will then publish the notice. The ordinance number...
1244.
I said 1244? So I'd like to make a motion, uh, authorizing ordinance number 1244, establishing prevailing wages for fiscal year 2016 and 17.
Second.
Okay, the motion on the floor, and a second, any questions to this motion? Roca?
Whelan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Uh, NICOR advises the village that free term allocation will be increasing for 2016. This is great news, cutting our natural gas costs for the year even further. The additional 1,037 free terms equals about $1,200 in savings, and there is an enclosed letter and chart. And that ends my review.
Thank you, Public Buildings and Properties Parks and Recreation, Chris Will.
Okay, status of the police station water main failure and restoration efforts. This is an ongoing project, but there is light at the end of the tunnel. The village settled a claim for $31,562, and all the work should come in below this amount. Chief, you wanna provide us with an update?
Yeah, I had a little PowerPoint presentation that had video, but for some reason, because of our, our programs are not compatible, I can't run the video.
It did?
Yeah, it did go off. What I can say is, uh, we had, uh... The video just shows the force of the water and how fast the water would accumulate in such a short amount of time. And when you look at the video, it's really some... I'll try to get it at another board meeting so we can watch it, but as you know, May 24th, it's around 6:55 PM, which was a good time, if there's any good time, because that shift change. Um, our, uh, our people discovered it within three minutes of the water main break. And both garages had already filled up with water at that time. If this would've happened at 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, who knows what would've happened? But the water, it's just unbelievable, the force. Damage was done to the concrete floor, the walls, cabinets. We had, uh, our records room, where the actual break took place was in the old independent inspection office, which we converted to a records room, so we had all our records there. Mud filled in the double bay garage, the single bay covering floors. Uh, the furnace rooms were covered with mud also. So we have some pictures here, if we go to the next slide. It had a pointer, but it doesn't seem to work on the screen, the TV screen.
It's her arrow.
It was her pointer. If you can see, this is the rail of the garage door. The force of the water took the concrete and pushed it up, and that's actually bent the bottom six inches of the rail on both garage doors. Now, we didn't replace this concrete, it settled down, they're gonna fill in the cracks. We can go to the next slide, I think there's another one. That's the other garage door. Shows the spacing joints they had came out, bent the rails. So that's the first thing we did, was we had to replace the rails so we could secure the garage, which we weren't able to do. Yes, sir?
Can the audience, the TV audience, see that? Maybe you can direct it over.
No, they cannot.
Maybe start over with your PowerPoint real quick so they can see.
Okay, yeah, go back to the first slide, and we'll just get that on TV here. You gotta go back some... There we go. Okay. They heard all that. Okay, that's the first slide, again, that's the rail. It's a rail of the other garage. Uh, if we go to the next slide. Um, this is the furnace room that was where the break was, where, uh, the office, where the floor actually, where the six-inch main was. And you can see the mud is still pooling there. Um, I, I thank the fire department, they did come over, they came over with squeegees, they came in force. They cleaned a lot of this out the night of the break, so they helped us do some cleanup, but we still have mud and, uh, other water problems there that are gonna be addressed once we get it cleaned up. Next slide, please. That's the furnace room of the police station. We were lucky enough that when we had the furnaces inspected, the water did not get high enough to where the filters are. Um, so the only damage we had was to our hot water heaters that took the pilots out. They just had to replace the pilot lights on those. You can see on here, when, this is the room. The concrete forced so much that it pushed the wall up, it actually cracked the drywall from the floor all the way to the ceiling. That's a picture of that. And here's a pic... This is where, uh, Public Works, they ran a new two-inch service line. They brought it in, that's the blue line you see coming in, which is, uh, reduced down to a one-inch line.
Let me explain that a little bit, Jeff, in that picture.
Okay.
Um, the six-inch main that was under the building was the original pipe into the building to, to fill up fire engines, because that was a fire station many years ago. And in 1985, they built the new station and moved the fire equipment to the new station across the street. And then the old fire station became the police station. Village Hall was always located in that corner of the building. Um, the police shared that space with the village hall when you and I started here.
Uh-huh.
We were, police and the village hall were in where the police, where our old village hall used to be, and then the fire had to rest. Um, the plumbing to the building was attached to the six-inch main, so it wasn't feasible to replace the six-inch main. And over time, everyone forgot there was a ticking time bomb under the building being the six-inch pipe. What we've done here is we routed a new pipe on the outside of the building and brought it into where the service connections were for the plumbing of the building and abandoned the old six-inch cast iron pipe.
You'll see pictures of that on the next slide there. The six-inch main, it actually broke back here, it's way off the picture, but the main comes underground, it comes to here, and this is where it was reduced to a one-inch tapped into here. Um, this fed the police department, and this fed the village hall right there. So what they did now is they run this, we have one valve to control all the water to the building, or we can shut off just to the police department or administrative offices, and, uh, they capped that six-inch main. Okay. That's just another look at it, once it's complete, they soldered the connections so the two-inch runs to that, save the existing plumbing with, uh, just, uh, cutting out that six-inch. It's just another picture, the holes are filled, now we got three valves, we just gotta remember what each are for. I think I can do that.
Those valves are sitting on concrete, what we call dog dishes, but they have these thrust blocks. Is that right, Bud? It stabilizes the pipe when it's down.
Yeah.
You did that work, right, Bud? Along with MJ?
Yes. Yeah, we had to dig all the way underneath the concrete floor. Actually, we had to pound the concrete floor out, so, and it was good old-fashioned German concrete.
You can say, this was like an old foundation here, that this, this pillar or post, I don't know if that goes back to...
Yeah, it was the old foundation where the dog dish is sitting on and that red, um, bar there. We had to literally, uh, we, we even punched through that and, and brought it down to grade.
Part of the original wellhouse, probably.
Yeah. Well, you actually had two different feeds that came in, where we tied in underneath, um, so is that pipe, you know, it came underneath that, um, wall, and ninety, came straight up, and they reduced it, like I said, to a one-inch, so you went from a six to a one-inch, which was really kinda wild. Then on the outside of that is the other, uh, there was another six-inch, there was originally two wells there, um, that fed off of the Penfield side, but we disconnected that, um, probably about two or three years ago, when we did the replacement of the main in front of the police station.
All right, they're setting them in, so, we still have, we, we just need... We should probably do is keep a wrench there if we ever have to shut it off, 'cause that's about, what, 18 inches?
That is.
Down. And that's outside, this is outside right off of Woodward Street, that's the six-inch main there. You can see where they cut it, capped it. So we don't have to worry about this problem again, though, the, the, the street is patched on Woodward, the sidewalk has been replaced, so that's all good to go. And, uh, in the last week or so, they came and prepared for the pouring of the floor. You see, they put the mesh down, uh, they, they brought in a concrete cutter to cut the floor. When they were cutting the floor, it started caving in on certain areas, so there was still sinkholes there. So we had a hard time with that saw, his saw was binding, because the whole thing would tilt. I mean, it, it looked like a, like an old mattress when he was cutting that concrete. But they, they cut it up in like, uh, two-by-two squares, so they were able to haul it out, brought in some stone, um, prep that got it ready. You can say they removed the bottom four feet of the drywall and removed the wet insulation. Next slide, please. And it's a, another look at it, we're taking out the insulation. They did spray with some chlorine and antibacterial and ordered a prep. And new floors poured, they did that on, I believe that was, uh, it was just last week. And there's three valves in place, so I think that's got a cure for, what, at least eight days before we can even walk on it, go in? I'm like, that's the end, for now. I mean, we still got restoration, we still got cleanup. And that will be next. And I will provide updates as that comes along.
Thanks, thank you, Chief. Okay, yeah, my next item on my report is update policies regarding rentals at Pyrmans Park. Last month, it was reported that, you know, during baseball season, there's no other events that can be booked during that time, you know, for the Beach Rec schedule and so on. So we opened up the park, uh, for other possible rentals. Over the last month or so, we've come across situations where we need to address, you know, as far as, uh, police security, um, you know, different types of events that we can have down there, limits as far as number of people and, and so forth. So this is something that, you know, we're, we're looking at. Also amplification of sound and crowd control. So those are things that we're, we're talking about, we wanted to bring it up to the board to tell you that we're going to be coming up with a new, uh, application for park rental, you know, and, and different rules and, and so on. We do have rules, uh, to the park right now, but we're gonna expand on those a little bit, because it's, you know, the park is a very nice location, it's a very nice park. A lot of people wanna use it, a lot of events down there, uh, so it's becoming more popular. And when that happens, we have to change with, with the changing times. You know, so that's what we're gonna be doing, and, um, I know the, the mayor, um, had talked about referring it to committee as far as coming up with rules, and then what we'll do is bring it back to the board, uh, as far as, uh, any more suggestions or, or anything like that. Uh, if you guys have any suggestions, or have seen or heard anything, you know, please let me know, and we'll, uh, come up with a new...
If I recall, it would be a joint Public Safety Parks and Rec Committee meeting?
Yes. Yeah. We'll get together because then...
The chief could be involved.
Yeah, because it's important, you know, we were talking about limiting, you know, anything over, say, 100 people would have to have, um, some type of security with the mayor's, you know, with our approval and, and so on, so there's different things that we're looking at. So, uh, look for them in the near future, because it's becoming the, you know, it's becoming more popular.
I think the mayor should be involved, because he's liquor commissioner.
Right.
There's certain times when liquor comes up in a park.
Right, and right now...
And right now, here, we have liquor on there.
Right. Right now, there's, you know, there's no alcohol policy down there, you know, that's posted on the signs, it's posted on our, uh, paperwork, so there are exceptions, of course, with the liquor commissioner, so... Uh, but that's what we're gonna see, you know, and we wanna make sure that it's kept. And, you know, we're, we're concerned about the, the neighboring properties also, especially when it gets into sound and, you know, different things like that, so that's kinda what... Did you wanna add anything more to that?
No, basically, what, and also what he's indicated is there's been decisions made in the past, which is a policy which maybe should be ordered, like we did with some of the liquor control things. So that's what he's talking about, rather than having him at home or, or make a decision, something to be basically black and white, which never think, nothing really is, but then make it easier for Scott to make a decision on what to approve and not to approve. And like I said, there's some policies that we've had that actually should be ordered, and that's what we're talking about doing.
Okay. So that's, uh, going to be a discussion the next meeting or two, okay? That ends my report.
Thank you.
Uh, on the parks and recreation, this is sort of on that, 4th of July, put up two fences today that you purchased some months back, or about a month or so ago. It's a nice fence, it really looks nice. It's aesthetically pleasing, and will do the job. And the good thing that, uh, I think was proposed at that time was that the fence is multi-use, they can use for the ice rink and other things at the time. So, uh, you know, if you get a chance, I'm sure you'll be down during the fourth, but, uh, it's aesthetically pleasing, you know, very nice fence. Actually, I had a resonating compliment complimented us tonight on it, so...
I think we have a use for it as soon as the fourth is over, the police want it to secure your equipment outside while the building's clean, right?
Yeah, when we do the, the cleaning of the building, 'cause it's not only the building, but it's file cabinets, it's equipment, they're gonna have to bring that all out and put it in front on the street, they got power washers, they're gonna have to wash it, so we're gonna have to kinda rope off that area and come up with a temporary sidewalk to go around that.
Is that planning, building, and zoning for First Community?
All right, the building department monthly reports are enclosed for your review. Uh, building permit has been submitted for renovation of a vacant building, Chubby's Sports Bar, which is located next to Tubby's in the same building. So that was just taken out, uh, any dates or anything?
Not that we know of, uh, I believe it was going through the part process for...
Yeah, I don't know if we approved that permit here or not. I think it went up to master code, because it's a restaurant, and the master code official reviewed this.
Conversation, or the, or the ideas for Tubby's and Chubby's have been floating around for probably two years now at least, and they were going back and forth on what to do and how to do it. We've seen the prints, and they finally came back and said they wanna go after these prints, so it's positive, at least as far as the, the vacant building will be filled with something then.
Okay. Consider a motion referring, uh, to the Plan and Building Zoning Commission an amendment to the zoning ordinance permit pertaining to special use of solar panels as primary and as accessory uses in all zoning districts. Uh, the technology has now made solar energy a reality in our northern climates. As you guys can see, it's, it's dry and sunny up here, and, you know, we don't... The climates aren't changing. And we need to address the new renewable energy source in our zoning ordinance, or zoning code, similar to what we did with the wind energy. We have granted and are going to grant building permits for solar panels on roofs in industrial districts, since we are treating them as HVAC units, but this is going to be proliferate?
Grow.
Polerate?
Grow.
Polerate?
Grow.
Grow. Soon. So you wanna say anything else about that, Bob? Okay.
The mayor did have to read that one, yeah. I came close.
No, it was close.
You did.
Okay, so, um, what we need to do is we need to revert, uh... I'm gonna make a motion to refer to the Planning, Building, and Zoning Commission an amendment to the zoning ordinance permit pertaining to special use permit for solar panel, panels as primary and accessory uses in all zoning districts.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, any questions in motion? Roca?
Meyer?
Yes.
Angel?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whelan?
Yes.
And that ends my report.
Public Safety, Chris Coleman.
Yeah, Police Department and Co. Enforcement monthly reports are closed for your review. Results of the bike rodeo, Chief, you wanna talk to us?
Well, despite the rain, the rain came in at the tail end of it, so we got the rodeo in. We had about, uh, 40 kids participate in the rodeo, just like each year, we give away prizes. We give away a boy's bike and a girl's bike. It was an event, uh, just like each year, it's, it's wonderful, people support it and they like it. Unfortunately, I don't have the results of the winners, because I turned that over to the media already, and I don't have them, but they were published in the paper.
Good, thank you, Chief. Um, studio abatement update, uh...
We've already started spring, we are, this is going into the third week. Um, this week coming up, you can plan on Wednesday, Friday, and Sunday night.
Don't, don't spray too early on Friday night, bud.
No.
Thank you, Bud.
You're welcome, sir.
Uh, consider a motion authorizing the purchase of a 2017 Ford utility vehicle, the Explorer. Uh, demo unit to replace a 2008 Ford Crown Vic in the amount of $24,969. This unit was used as a demo for police conventions and had 1,000 miles on it from Terry's Ford. It's being offered for cheaper than the 2017 SBC base price for the same vehicle less the spotlights for $25,005, and is in immaculate condition. The chief wishes to purchase the vehicle and have it available for use around August 4th. First, $24,000 was budgeted for the purchase, but other line items in the PD vehicle budget can be used to convert the difference. Any comments on this?
What I wanna say is originally the $24,000 was used, 'cause I was specing out a Dodge Charger. Um, we're get, we're, we're eliminating a Ford, and I'd like to get another Ford. I've got three Chargers now, so it's just something that changed my mind, wanna go to the SUV. Got a deal, I'll, I'll give you an example, the, the SPC bid is 25.5, you add the spotlight and the other, um, options that this demo has, it come out to 26,175. We're getting it for under 25. Same thing, it's a 2017, but it's only got 1,000 miles. I think it'll fit our needs a little better. I can, uh, make up that extra $900 within the budget. And it's an all-wheel-drive SUV. Um, equal to, it says a, a police interceptor, but it's, it's an Explorer, pretty much.
It's the same one that the sheriff's using now.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Yeah. This time, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the purchase of a 2017 Ford utility vehicle demo unit to replace a 2008 Ford Crown Vic in the amount of $24,969.
A second.
The motion on the floor, and there was a second, any questions to the motion? Roca?
Whelan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Uh, request for closed session to discuss personnel. This session is being requested to discuss the resignation, replacement of an officer, and the creation of a hiring list. Any questions, if the chief or myself? If not, that's a piece of my...
Public Works Committee, Chris, please.
Uh, the Water Department and the Sewer Department monthly report is enclosed for your review. Uh, Penfield Street Water Main project update to be provided by the administrator at the meeting.
We're getting to the nitty-gritty on the design of the project. One new thing that we have added to the project is as a request to the Fire Department, we will be putting Stort's fittings on all the hydrants for quick neck. This will be the first time Beachers ever put Stort's fittings on, is that correct, Bud?
Yes, it is.
So we'll be doing that on Penfield and on Elm. Um, we have debated whether or not a piece of, of water main that's running under an alley between Elm Street and Penfield needs to be replaced. Uh, we've decided to bid that project out, and after we open the bids, figure out what it costs to do that piece, and if it's too expensive, we'll cover it. But right now, we've had no problems with that piece remaining, it's ducted wire, and it was put in about 1990. But we're there anyway, should we do that piece or not? We'll make that decision after we open the bids, is that correct, Bud? 'Cause we were flipping a coin to sort it out.
Yep.
Uh, with that, we are ready to go with the project. The question now is, when is EPA gonna be ready to go? That's where we're at. We will have more information for you, uh, as we go on to July and August, whether or not it would be feasible to consider the temp, not, not the temporary main, but possibly do that piece as a permanent project with our cash and remove it from the loan because of all the breaks we're having. That, we might do that. That's something that we'll be discussing with Public Works Chairman, and he'll be bringing it back to the committee and into the full board for consideration. Um, if we can put a temporary in for 19, might we do a permanent one? Or just a little bit more, to get it done, and not have to dig that road up again, so we'll be...
That makes sense. Uh, Maxwell Street Storm Sewer Project is complete, this is the final report.
Well, there's a little bit of dirt work that has to be done, but all the asphalt work, everything was done last Friday. Well, there's a little bit of dirt work that has to be done, but all the asphalt work, everything was done last Friday, so it'll probably still be a little, we'll have to go periodically and put a little stone in the trench in the parkway, but I can't even believe it's done there, Frank. Only a monthly, but.
Uh, street name signs replacement project update. Ferry Crossing subdivision is complete with the exception of a few stop signs which need to be replaced. And then Tucket Cove is now the last phase and will be done after the fourth. All materials are in for this job. New street banners are up and were purchased by the businesses in town through the chamber and might add any look for it now.
Just a comment on that. A lot of them are blocked by tree branches. I don't know if that's us. I don't know who would do it, but maybe we should take a look at that.
Yeah, I did notice that.
And I'm not saying tomorrow.
Is that the ones on the highway or this one?
Yeah, about one.
Oh.
I just, we could just, we won't forget the tag.
If it's a safety issue, we will address it.
It'd be safety if we can't see the banners.
Okay.
Well, if we had, just take a look at it.
Safe Routes to School Grant Project Update. PT Farrell was awarded the contract and work is expected to begin on August first and be completed by August twentieth. The sidewalk ramp would be the first phase of this project, but there is a little monkey wrench.
Since I wrote this, things have changed.
Yeah.
And there's nothing we can do about it, but I, that is gonna officially close down on July first, and I mean closed. So I'm glad to see they mowed the rights of way this week. They went with the big bat wings and cut the grass. Because it's my understanding, unless it's life safety, they're not moving after July one. And again, this is part of the poker game. We're playing on the state budget. You know, and EPA could be in the same position, where they're only doing the regulatory work and not doing any additional work. We don't know yet.
So that's up to you.
This Safe Routes to Schools project is under contract. It will be done. It's a matter of when now, not yet. But unfortunately, the next school year will probably start without this project being done.
Okay, the next item is, consider a motion authorizing the purchase of a two thousand seventeen F four fifty mini dump truck for a total cost of fifty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars. This includes the chassis, which is being purchased from Curry Motors through the SPC for thirty-six thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars. And the dump body, plow and lights being purchased through Monroe Truck Equipment for nineteen thousand five dollars. Fifty-four thousand two ten was budgeted in the capital equipment sinking fund account and the difference in price of one thousand twelve dollars will be covered by the repair to vehicles line items in the budget. The reason we are off by these prices is a new model year has come out now. This truck will be ordered, but we will not receive it until the end of October, at which time we will purchase, we will pay for the chassis. The truck then goes to Monroe for the body. We will have the truck in service for the next winter season. Reason for the difference in price is the new model pricing twenty-seventeen. You can no longer find a SPC or state bid for a twenty sixteen GASP F four fifty. Please see the enclosed bid specs and pricing.
One comment, we found lots, nice red four fifties, sixteen models we could buy. They're all diesels. Public Works don't want diesel for that size truck because now with the new law, you gotta let that diesel run for twenty minutes every forty hours. You gotta let it idle.
We, like first, the trailer that you just bought at the park, we've gotta, you gotta crank it up and let it sit there for thirty minutes on high end.
So I asked Public Works, I said, all right, we can do it within the budget for a diesel or we can spend the extra thousand dollars and wait six months to get the gas. And they had a meeting and they decided they would rather wait for the gas because that diesel, sure enough, while you're powdering snow, the light will come on and you may have to shut down and let that thing regenerate for the emissions. So we thought that's not efficient for our purposes. They'd rather have the gas truck. Is that correct?
That one other thing too was that we found out that you would have to add an additive to the diesel for the regeneration mode. So it was another just headache out there. Add cost, so no, let's stick with the gas.
For the benefit of everybody, SBC is suburban purchasing cooperative. So from the.
Little County Government.
Little County Government. So basically, they go out for bids, get these prices, post these prices, and we can buy off of them.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion authorizing the purchase of a two thousand seventeen F four fifty mini dump truck for a total cost of fifty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars.
I'll second.
There's a motion on the floor and there is a second. Any questions in the motion? Roque.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Omen?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes.
Okay, Status of Tree Take Down, Trimming and Stump Removal. Encloses the status report on where we were, we are with the tree service request. We are tracking calls for service in the office since the ashboard struck, struck since we are getting way behind. Right now, if we could dedicate a four-man crew for a month, we could catch up with this list, but we never seem to find a time with all the other priorities.
I believe most of the dangerous trees are gone and the big trees that have been done by contractors are gone. It's the smaller ones that our guys can handle that we just haven't gotten to yet. There's probably about a hundred of them out there in there, bud.
Very easily, yes. There are still some bigger ones, but they're not, they haven't reached the point where there is a safety concern or where they're ready to follow or so.
We're tracking them.
Okay. No other questions. That ends that report.
Okay, Economic Development, three relations, trustee Basil, continue on.
Okay. Uh, myself and the village president met with the Southland Convention and Visitor Bureau. This Sally Schlesinger, very nice lady. She brought a packet out with all the information and stuff that they offer to the community. Our Fourth of July is in there, things like that for other, for all the communities. Couple of things they talked about was the Belmore Park, the equestrian events that they're gonna have there. I think there's like sixteen of them for the season, so that will bring a lot of people into the area. She did talk to me, or I talked to her about the bike path. She gave me a gentleman's name by Steve Lutell. Actually, Congressman Kelly gave me the same gentleman's name, so kind of tie that part of my in with with this. I reached out to Steve. He was on vacation for three, three weeks. He got back with me today. He's gonna talk to Ralph from the Ford Reserve. He liked the plans that I submitted, the information you sent me. He thought that was really, really a nice situation set up and he's gonna talk to the Ford Reserve and get back to me on the bike path also. So she did help with that. Couple of other things she talked about was the Timber Sports are bringing the lumberjack championships to Timly Park, the fifteenth and sixteenth at the Convention Center, so that's like a, a na, national timber. They cut these logs and stuff at their convention center, so it's a big, big deal. It's like from Chicago. So they brought it into Timly Park, so they do good things for the community. So that was, any questions on that or the bike path? Uh, smartphone application update. We've been in contact with Joe, Marcy, myself and Jeanette. He's working out, he did a lot of work on it. See, some, some things are, have been taken care of and he's gonna continue working on it. There were some glitches with it. I believe we can, we can do the push notifications now, so he did set that up and that's active, so.
Just on that, we may be doing one tomorrow when we close Penfield for the carnival. We'll send out a notification and probably a mix of general information, so we will know.
Just again, for the benefit of the audience, the company updated the app to a new platform and basically the platform has bugs, so they're in the process of fixing the bug, so if anybody tries to use the app and find something wrong, that's what's going on.
Thank you. Gold Street Improvement Update. Bids continue to be received for the boardwalk covering the old cement walk in the six hundred block of Gould. The formal recommendation is not yet prepared, but we are, we are prepared to have some discussions on what we have learned so far. Proposals are being solicited from JDK and BND Construction. In addition, the Warner decking, the committee will also continue to meet with the downtown businesses. Work has begun on the Riley and a new, and a new water service line is being installed. Sitting Hall is ready to open hopefully by July first, but some things remain to be completed in that building as well. The old Wymanhofer Hardware Store continues under renovation with an opening date sometime around the first of the year.
From, from the amount we budgeted for the decking project, it appears that composite material is extremely unlikely. Even lumber is going to be, even the use of womanized lumber is going to be tight with the budget according to the contractors I'm talking to. That being said, we'll see what their bids come in at and then we'll bring them to the committee first and then to the board for consideration. It's a huge project. It's two hundred and sixty feet long and at some points it's as wide as twenty feet. And then there's some bump outs and some stairs. It's pretty involved.
And like again, the Vincent Bike, Bike Path, TrailsForIllinois.org is Steve Lutell. That's his thing and he's, he's been involved in all the bike paths up north and he's really a good, good person to have on your side. Like I said, Congressman Kelly gave me his name and so did Sally, so. That is my report. Unless there's questions?
Thank you. Just a comment. Tonight, starting at about six o'clock, two Beecher teams are in the tournament for first place in their league. Tonight, Beecher is playing Grand Park, John Defirements Park. Beecher is also playing, I believe, Creek, in Creek tonight to compete for first place. Tonight, they asked if we allowed the first pitch. I missed. It boxed in, but anyways, I'm proud of the teams, what they did and go Beecher. I hope they win and they're successful. And that's where trustee Corrus is at tonight. It's one of his teams in Creek.
This marks the end of the season too.
Uh, yeah, it's time to be the end of the season. So, pretty proud of the teams and the parents and obviously the kids themselves playing like they do. And I've been, everyone. Beecher Emergency Management, I believe the chief is referring to the name, the Emergency Management Agency, which is common. We do have a governmental agreement signed with the township and the fire district, so we're proceeding on that. We almost had a director, which would have been a good choice, which I think could have took the go by the horn and ran with it. But I believe we have gotten no word, but that's probably out of the question.
I don't know yet. We probably won't know till after mid-July.
So by the way, it's hopefully soon we'll begin taking applications and begin getting that off the ground. Is there any other old business to come before the court? Is there any new business to come before the court?
I just wanted to show the plaque. Remember, we were talking about this through the Historic Preservation Commission? This is a plaque that's actually gonna go on Don's house over on, on Indiana and Catalpa. And these plaques are going to be, you know, we, we've been talking about it and we're thinking about possibly going, we are getting the Washington Township involved in this as well. Washington Township are, at our last meeting, was there. They have a liaison and what we're going to be talking about in the near future is possibly coming up with buildings that would be worthy of these plaques to start and possibly come up with a program between the village and also the township to be able to offer these to owners that own properties in Beecher, you know, significant. What was it? What did we come up with?
Historical significance.
Historical significance.
The, what is the name of the papscade?
This is just a, it's like a village. It's, what we wanted to do is of course put the depot on there because that's our centerpiece. But when you, when you deal with projects like this, you know, they're not going to be able to customize it that much. You know, so we're still looking at it. This can be mounted right to the building or it can be mounted on poles or stakes in, in the, you know, by the building. So we're gonna work with the township because there's so many historic buildings in the village and also in the township that I think we should bring to light. And I'm gonna be talking to you two about the, the apps and the websites and everything else because what we wanna do is do a map highlighting some of these properties and, and you know, a little bit of history about Beecher.
Do you think there's a need to integrate a website with that plaque so if people see it, they wanna know more about the Dr. Riley home, there's a reference?
Right.
On the plaque or somewhere near?
Right, and we'll have that and we're gonna, what we wanna do is put a map out with, with the, like a.
Have people walk and visit.
And go out and visit, you know, drive and, and visit and, and have a little bit of a explanation of, of the building. We also wanna do some, some signs like, like what's out here with the Dixie, you know, driving the Dixie. Because I think there's situations where, like the golf course, you know, out here where this was the original farmstead, you know, with, with the cattle and everything else of T.L. Miller. So we could highlight something like that. We could highlight different, different locations. You know, highlight the first home in Beecher, you know, and, and different things like that, so. We're, we wanna add more, you know, we wanna preserve the history of Beecher because I think it's important. And I think it's important to let the young people in the area also see what Beecher has and what we've had in the past. So that's what we're working on. We may be coming back because we wanna work out some type of a financial thing where we can actually present these plaques from the village and also the township to be able to put them up.
Okay, Governor Bradovich is the liaison of the community township, it is.
Right, so he was, he was at our last meeting. Greg was at our last meeting. And there's a lot of good ideas. We also talked about, you know, the downtown as far as murals, you know, putting murals up on, you know, like the, the side of the, the old lumber store that's right across the street. You know, if that could be dressed up in murals and, and have like storefront, you know, the, you know.
It was an excellent idea.
Yeah, that is a nice idea.
To hide that wall there.
And, and you know what, what happened is I was talking to our sign person that I was talking to and she said she went down to, she's on this commission and she goes all over the country and paints murals. And all of a sudden, the light bulb went out in, or went on, not out, went on in my head and I thought that would be perfect for that area to dress it up. One thing she told me is she says she was in a little town in Missouri. I forget the name of the town, but it's, when she was painting the mural, she says, you know what? There's this nice little town just north of Watsika, which is Beecher, that these murals would really fit in well. So I thought it was a great idea. I wanted to bring it to the historic, you know, and see what we can do. But that's something, and I, I think what it would do too is it would bring people down there to see, you know, not only see the buildings and the, and walk, but also look at the murals and, you know, there's other spots.
Some of us I know are there, but the best example I can think of, if you wanna go look at what we're talking about for the benefit of the audience is Homewood. Downtown Homewood has three murals. I know there are other elsewhere this, just.
On the side of the building.
Right.
And it was brought up, I think, did she? Anyways, one of them brought up was a fantastic idea.
Yeah, it's, it's just one of those things where, you know, what we could do, and I, I, I asked her, I said, you know, the, the, the buildings that we have are, are like corrugated. And she says what we can do is put actual panels up and affix those to the buildings, you know, so you don't have the, you know, you have panels up there. And I forget what she was working on, but. And I forget what she was working on, but it was an old bakery, you know, an old bakery from back in the day, you know, as a mural. And I think that would help highlight, give it more of a downtown area.
That's it. Any other new business? Ask the for motion to during executive session to discuss personnel, public works contract and the acquisition only.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions in the motion? Roll call.
Whalen?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Staff, please. Motion on the floor for the full-time blue cell.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to hire Aaron Decordi to be a full-time officer of the village of Beecher. I'd like to be immediately.
The motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions in the motion? Roll call.
Whalen?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer? Yes.
There was no other action to be taken tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
May and second. Any questions to that motion? I don't know. Roll call.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody.